Good evening. It is six thirty P M. Monday, March twentieth, twenty twenty-three. This is a Carney Board of Aldermen meeting. Call the meeting to order.
To flag of the United States of America and to your republic, which is states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Surely you've had a chance to take role?
I have taken role. Everybody is present. You have a call.
We'll move on to personal appearances this evening. We have Mr. Bill Shoal request for fireworks discharge permit for July third, twenty twenty-three, for his annual fireworks display in Beverly Park. Mr. Shoal?
It's an annual venture, Honored. I think it's a credit to the city. We'd like to keep doing it.
Any questions from the board or discussion from staff?
I would like to see you keep doing it because I can see it from my back desk.
I have a standing invitation to every member of the Board of Aldermen to come watch. I think I had one. From the neighbors yard. The rest of you are always welcome.
I was up there one year. One year I was up there.
Okay, we've got two then. We're we're watching. Now we just need the mayor up there sometime.
Need to get up there. If there are no other questions or items of discussion, can we entertain a motion to approve Mr. Shoal's request?
I make a motion to approve.
Well, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Congratulations, sir.
It was pretty easy, wasn't it?
Yes. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Move forward to the consent agenda. Are there any items of discussion, questions, or modifications requested on the consent agenda this evening?
Mayor would like to request the removal of item E for further discussion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we will remove item E from the consent agenda and discuss the item after we go through the consent agenda. So are there any other questions or items of discussion on the other items on the consent agenda this evening?
Make a motion to approve consent agendas minus section E?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Consent agenda passes with the removal of item E. Let's go ahead and move on to discussion for item E before we move on to ordinances. So item E is a resolution authorizing the city administrator to sign a services agreement with Flock Group, Inc. for hardware, software, and services for stationary license plate reader cameras in the amount not to exceed seventy-four thousand nine hundred dollars for a twenty-four month term. We do have our police chief here this evening who's requested that as part of his budget next year. What items of discussion or questions does the board have for staff?
What other communities have this system in place?
You know, they're getting really popular right now. Gladstone just implemented. Clay County is in the in the process of installing. Looking at it. Not sure that they committed yet, but pretty much nationwide. You watch the news, Blue Springs, I think it's Blue Springs. Just had a bunch of cameras installed a couple of months ago. Already seeing some success from the camera systems.
So we've already been through the cameras for stoplight runners and those are no longer working. What's the possibility that we enter this contract and in a year, courts say that this isn't allowed either, and then we're out the money?
You know, I guess there's always a chance of that. It's a it's a system that's been in place for several years. You know, it's not a camera system that's per se trying to take a picture of you. It's it's reading the license plate and on top of reading the license plate, it's identifying your. You know, and it's sending us hits on endangered wanted persons, homicide suspects, stolen autos, stolen plates. Just, you know, if if one of those vehicles enters into your city and passes on the cameras, it will take photos and it will send that information on to the officers on duty. And try to locate the car at that point.
So it automatically, if it detects a stolen auto, it automatically sends something to the.
Right to the computer in the car. It will send you a hit that a stolen auto just passed the camera on thirty-three highway at hundred and thirtieth northbound indoor city, real time. And it's it's quick and, you know, we called around some other departments who are utilizing the cameras and they've seen great success with them. There's the old license plate reader that mounted in a car that the guys would drive around. You'd drive through the motel parking lots, the grocery stores, and it would give you a hit on a stolen auto or, you know, a wanted person. Yeah, this technology kind of takes it to another level. And like I say, it's it's immediate or notified, you know, in the car that it'll be on the lookout for a certain vehicle.
Do we have those license plate readers? In the vehicles already?
We do not. We do not have that technology.
But we used to?
No, we've never had.
Oh, okay. So we've never even had that level?
Physically have to see the car and get on the radio and run the tag right now. We've never had the technology. And these cameras are always working where the officer, we go to a call, we go back station, we write reports for hours. These cameras are mount stop. And I say cameras, they're readers, twenty-four seven. You know, when a car passes, they're checking that car to see if there's something we need to know about.
So are the readers like what you see on Kansas City Police Department cars and North Kansas City?
The reader, but the new technology where, you know, the license plate reader really didn't tell you, this system's actually going to identify the car, which is helpful later on if I'm working a case where somebody broke into Porter's overnight. You know, I can start checking cameras if we can get a get a time and you can start looking for vehicles passing out every round that time. Or if somebody sees a black truck leaving Porter's at midnight, loaded full of whatever, you can go into the system and look for the black pickup truck, you know. In certain time frames, it'll start searching every truck in town. Or anything that matches that, it'll it'll search parcel license plates. And if you see a hit and run and you just got the first three, we can plug that in. It'll start searching all the cameras around town to identify all license plates in the car to start with those first three. Just a great investigating tool on top of a real time, you know, murder suspect or screwing into town, so.
I know I'd add some phone calls and some emails about there's always going to be those people that have the the big brothers watching complex and and so, you know, I heard a lot of that and so.
This technology, it's kind of watching your car. It's it's not really concentrating on you. It focuses on the back of the car and it's 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 measuring the car for a personal fingerprint on that car. If you've got a unique bumper sticker, it's going to note that and it's going to figure out, you know, say it's a Kansas license. It has the technology to say, okay, that's not Missouri license, that's a Kansas license. So it's it's not like the camera's focused on you or who's driving. We just want to know who that vehicle belongs to and then we'll kind of take it from there. We can kind of process elimination, try to figure out who was driving that vehicle at that time in that area and and through the course of investigation.
Now, how safe is this from being hacked or being, you know, say somebody wants a home in area, can they get into it? And they know when everybody goes to work every morning, they know when everybody comes back that afternoon because you're constantly reading their tags. So they constantly know who's coming and going out of that subdivision. How do you keep from that from getting to bad people?
You know, I would assume with the same technology that they're using for the banks and for everything else that we put out there these days, I don't know exactly what their software is, but it's a, Flock is a well-known company. And then I would assume, you know, their protection is as well.
It's a secure encrypted software.
Where would you suggest that we put these cameras?
We kind of did a study with Flock itself and and we're looking at like fourteen cameras and we looked at our high traffic areas coming into town. And we've tried to cover the whole town with fourteen cameras. So you're thirty-three highway, ninety-two, you know, road down here. Every once in a while, we get somebody sneaking in from the north here and they'll do something in town and sneak back out. So now we would have a camera down there.
But you're saying that that you, I know for for Babio, but you're also saying that that everybody that lives in town, you can track where they go.
I assume you could search that in the system if you had a need to do that. Yeah, I don't know why you would do that, but, uh, like I say.
Well, that's the concern.
Unless you have a warrant attached to your license, you know, stolen auto or something, you know, there'd be no need to address you.
Well, I understand, I understand from a police officer's aspect, but I'm I'm I've gotten calls on this and that's one of their concerns is that this would give technology for you or anybody else to track somebody's total movement in all of town.
I think we're tracked and recorded everywhere we go now. I live in town here and that it doesn't concern you, but I understand it's concerning somebody.
Right. I'm not saying it's concerning either.
With your cell phone. Yeah.
Yeah, we are. We are track constantly.
Good.
And it doesn't, it doesn't track anyone where they're going. It it just notes when a license plate crosses the camera.
Correct, but you can take, in pinpoint, okay, it went across this camera, then it went across this camera, went across this camera. He's going here, he's went there, he's came back. Yes, individually, it's not tracking, but it is tracking. The system's tracking.
How many of us have ring doorbells at home?
Not me, for that very reason.
I, people that drive past my house, I can see any day on my cell phone in real time.
I'm fairly certain that I can't drive down my street for a block and not be on somebody's camera.
Yeah. Well, I'm just hearing the calls I'm getting.
No.
And unfortunately, I also am, just like David and Dan here, and I have had several emails, quite a few texts, a few phone calls. There are some concerns and they also were aware that if we get this, we'll be the first city to actually have it and implement it. I know you said that Clay County is close to doing it.
Gladstone, I've been up and running for a while too.
But no one right near us. Holt doesn't have it. Cameron.
Yeah, my other concern that I have with this, and surely in for Tom, but, um, for renewal on this, it's thirty-five thousand dollars a year on that, according to Flock's deal. So seventy-five thousand upfront, thirty-five thousand a year after that. My question is, did you ever hear back on S B one sixty-one?
Um, no, I I the I have not heard back from the center. I don't know if anybody else on the board did either.
So if 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 that passes, that's going to throw our whole budget out of whack. And this is another item that, I mean, it's one thing for having a one-time fee, but we're, it's ongoing thirty-five thousand dollars a year on top of that. And if that concern anybody, it concerned me a little bit, but I mean, if one sixty-one doesn't pass, it doesn't affect us at all, but if it does, we've got some. Those of you that don't know, State Bill one sixty-one is, they're trying to pass a law where there'd be no sales tax on food. And our grocery store here creates a lot of sales tax for the city of Carney, which is a lot of revenue that if it gets passed, well, that's revenue that we we don't get in to be able to maintain our.
Yeah, I I it's my opinion that, just like when we, anytime we invest in in any tool that we give our police department, I would much rather pay thirty-five thousand dollars, spend thirty-five thousand dollars of our taxpayer's money to protect our community, to save a life, you know, if that would, if if this system, just like when we invested in adding two K nines to our our police department to provide those tools, that was an expense and created ongoing expenses that we we never had, but what that does is that, in my opinion, the first time one of those dogs tracked a lost kid or got some dangerous drugs off the street, that investment's paid for. I think the first time that this system would allow us to catch a dangerous criminal, that that would be worth it to me. We continue to be one of the fastest growing cities and one of the top ten safest cities in the state, and that doesn't happen by accident, in my opinion. Your, my response to the budget question is, yeah, if Senate Bill one sixty-one passes, we've got a lot of work to do, but I also don't know that we should hold up progress, in my opinion. What's I known of that? Yes.
And I'd just like to point out that thirty-five thousand dollars is less than the cost of one patrol officer. And this money is going to give our patrol officers that we do have a tool. They cannot be everywhere patrolling. This gives them information so that they know where to start driving around. A lot of times if somebody is going to break into a vehicle at night, they are driving a stolen vehicle into town, hitting a neighborhood right off the highway, this is going to ping dispatch. They'll be dispatched out. They'll be able to be patrolling neighborhoods. They'll know what area to be patrolling. There was an ATM that got hit a few months ago, again, came into our city in a stolen vehicle. The vehicle had already been reported stolen. Those license plate readers may have very well prevented that from happening and definitely would have made it easier to solve the crime.
And on the ATM left of Hiking Head, they brought a stolen truck into town, hooked it to the ATM, pulled the ATM cassettes out, took the money. They came to town a couple of their cars. They they dumped, as soon as they were done with the pickup, they dumped it in town and they got into a couple of their cars. We had a witness in Salt getting into two of their cars. And there's probably an outside chance those other cars may have been clean cars that we could have got a license plate off of, had we had that technology in place.
Yeah, so when, and then Alderman Lehman, you mentioned some, we know of other municipalities that are going to this new technology, but like Gladstone, North Kansas City, Independence, those readers that you see mounted on the front and back of cars, that technology, but it's mobile currently. Everybody's moving to kind of the thick readers at kind of the high traffic entrances and exits into the community. The technology's been there for years. You know, you you bring up the point, red light cameras are outlawed in our state. That that's the business we're in. I think our our city attorney would tell us that, you know, regulations can change anytime and a lot of the tools that our our law enforcement officers have could change or or be outlawed at any time, so. I don't have any questions for for the chief or staff. Are there any other items on this topic?
I have a couple of questions. To be clear, you're not using this to write speeding tickets or red light. That's not what this is about.
You're using it to to identify a car and a license plate.
Okay. This isn't about making us richer, adding money to our coffers. This is, this is.
This is about solving cases and putting bad people in jail. It's just what it's about.
And one other concern that I have heard is that people are are wondering what keeps this system from being abused by somebody in power. So are there are there going to be safeguards in place that I couldn't come to you and say, hey, I really want you to track David because I don't think he's doing what he's supposed to be doing. I mean, is there, are there safeguards in place for that kind of?
There would be, yeah, just like our computer system. You come to me and want a license plate. Well, I can't do it unless there's a a crime attached to it or a legitimate record attached to it.
Okay.
It's just, it's it's safe information that I can't give out. This would be the same.
Is Flock the only system out there or?
I think there might be some other systems, but the advantage here is if the surrounding agencies that are going to Flock, we can tag onto those cameras. Clay County, when they decided to place their cameras, they took a look at where we're putting ours so they can kind of back us up in different spots. So we might even get notified. The weight scales, you know, out of the city, that there's a car coming into the city on I thirty-five from Clay County camera, not ours. But if we go with Flock, we can kind of share information. So so we would get notified, you know, that we have a car coming our way from Clay County before we'd even hit on our cameras, which which could be in, you know, trying to intercept.
So so who has information, access to this information?
The agencies that would possess the cameras that would have the systems. So Clay County would have information, Gladstone, you know, they have information. I think you probably decide who you share information with. I don't know that I can get on the system and look and see, you know, look for a car in Gladstone. But that's something I could get general on again, but I don't think you can get on the system and see what's going on Gladstone. We'd be limited to see what's happening here in Carney.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but let's say for, I mean, the the technology and the the ability to search license plate information, that's not new, right? Like, for example, if if my license plate, you know, if if the license plate was was, you know, law enforcement agencies, if they get the proper search warrants or searches, you you can log in and say, and 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 pull through your Regis or Mules and say, hey, why was this like, you know, check the last two, you know, two months, has this license plate been ran anywhere? You can see what agency ran a license plate and you can say, reach out to those guys and say, hey, why did you run this license plate? And what was your contact with this guy? I mean, that that, you can kind of already do that, but not as effective, correct? Like, I guess what I'm getting at is, I don't think that the fear of of, well, now they can track or now they can pull all this information that they've never been able to pull or have before. I don't think that's accurate, I guess, is what I'm trying to get at.
You know, the people that reached out to me, they aren't so concerned about, you know, if it's a license plate reader that is on a vehicle, say Austin has it on his, they would anticipate and expect that you might be collecting their data, be it their license plate, their make and model of car. But the concern was collecting data at numerous points throughout our city as opposed to just helping him when he's making a stop or considering making a stop. That was more of a concern in the emails and texts, et cetera, phone calls that I got. The other concern was the cost, ongoing cost. So, yeah, that is, I was surprised, but my constituents did reach out to me and therefore I am their voice, so I I feel very compelled, obligated to bring up these things, that there are people in our community that are, have concerns.
Any other questions or comments from the board on the topic?
I do, Chief, don't get me wrong. I think, you know, our police department is very important and this is another tool to make our police department more effective. And we're already having a hard time getting vehicles on the road and and I understand we lost a vehicle over the weekend. So I understand this is a tool that wouldn't get bad guys off of the off of the roads. You know, the mayor's absolutely correct. We are one of the fastest growing communities in the state. And we are close to Kansas City, so we do see a lot of people coming from the Kansas City area to do bad things in our community, so.
There's no other questions or comments? Can we entertain a motion approving Resolution fifteen twenty twenty-three? A resolution authorizing the city administrator to sign a services agreement with Flock Group, Inc. for hardware, software, and services for stationary license plate reader cameras in an amount not to exceed seventy-four thousand nine hundred dollars for a twenty-four month term. So moved.
I'll second.
We got a first and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
I don't have a vote. Um, I guess I.
I'll make it unanimous, but I have made you aware that there are a lot of people very concerned, so I.
Okay. Resolution passes unanimously. We'll move on to ordinances. First ordinance this evening, motion approving bill number ten twenty twenty-three presented by Donnie Smith, our utilities and streets director.
This is the same type of thing we've done for the last year or so with the Department of Health and Senior Services where they have a grant to supply us with fluoride equipment and testing supplies. So I want to enter in an agreement with them. You just spend not more than ten thousand and that's what they'll reimburse for supplies and equipments to dispel fluoride.
Any questions from the board on the proposed ordinance? If you can read the proposed ordinance on the first time by title only, please.
An ordinance authorizing the city administrator to sign a program services contract with the State of Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services to receive a community water fluoridation, equipment repair, and replacement grant in the amount of up to ten thousand dollars.
Make a motion to approve on first read.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance authorizing the city administrator to sign a program services contract with the State of Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services to receive a community water fluoridation, equipment repair, and a replacement grant in the amount of up to ten thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second. We'll pull the board, please.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Ordinance is passed unanimously. Next item is a motion approving bill number eleven twenty twenty-three presented by Chief of Police Tom O'Leary, an ordinance authorizing the chief of police to submit grant applications to the Missouri Department of Transportation Division of Highway and Safety for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Do you have a report on that, Chief?
You know, we're asking the the board to approve the MoDOT grants. The first grant is going to be an impaired driving grant. The second is a hazardous moving violation grant. We've done both of these in the past with a lot of success. We're able to bring the guys in and instead of answering calls, they are just working these grants, you know, identifying innocent drivers, you know, looking for the D W I's and and we've had a lot of success with those grants. The third thing is a MoDOT grant that will cover the ticketing system. We're hoping they would, they would buy all the equipment for the cars and kind of get us online to Missouri show me courts where we where we need to be, so.
Any questions from the board? If you can read the proposed, just a motion. That's not a.
Make a motion to approve.
I'm sorry, there is an ordinance attached that, right? Yeah, if you could read the proposed ordinance by title only.
An ordinance authorizing the chief of police to submit grant applications to the Missouri Department of Transportation, MoDOT Division of Highway Safety for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a first and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance authorizing the chief of police to submit grant applications to the Missouri Department of Transportation, MoDOT Division of Highway Safety for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
Pull the board, please.
Alderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Vote unanimous. Ordinance passes. Last ordinance this evening is a motion approving bill number twelve twenty twenty-three presented by Sheila Ernst, our city administrator, an ordinance approving the reappropriation and revision of the City of Carney, Missouri fiscal year twenty twenty-three adopted city budget.
So, um, what I'm used to, and I I looked, and it doesn't look like you guys are used to doing this, but I'm used to an end of the year budget true-up. And then also an initial budget year very close to budget amendment, very close to the beginning of the next fiscal year. So this would be an end of year budget true-up. Sometimes things happen like and this ordinance covers things that have caused us to go over budget in some areas. They are all as a result of contractual and policy obligations. So, for example, we have a personnel policy that allows employees that are retiring to be paid out for sick and vacation time. Those amounts are not budgeted in our budget, but.
budget, but the personnel policy, uh, does allow employees to get that. Um, we had some retirements this year that did cause us to go over budget because, um, of the vacation and sick time payouts. Um, also, the same thing, we have a TIF contract, a TIF agreement for shops at Kearney. Um, the sales taxes and property taxes came in higher than were anticipated. Um, a lot of that is due to the grocery store being in that area and inflation. Well, we have a contractual obligation to remit, uh, the eats and the pilots to the developer. And so, because we didn't know exactly how, uh, those revenues were going to come in, um, the payment of those obligations have caused us to be a little bit over budget. Um, additionally, there were some things that happened in the community, um, that the city had to take action on, some emergency and safety issues. Um, and that caused our legal and engineering services to go over and above. And so, this is just kind of a, a tying a nice little bow, um, on the budget. I don't ever like to have an audit comment, um, in our notes that says that we were over budget in any fund. Um, it's not the end of the world if that happens, however, I just prefer not having that. And so, um, every year you'll see an end of year budget true-up, and I'll always explain what's causing, um, the need for, for that.
Do we ever accrue for a benefit time, knowing that we've got employees that'll be needing to be paid out? Do we, do we accrue for any of that expense?
We, we do not. So typically, that is always paid out of fund balance. Um, also, if it's not a huge amount, sometimes you can delay in hiring, and that can, but when you have, uh, so the board changed the policy several years ago, um, and has limit, limited the amount of payout. Um, there are some employees that were grandfathered in, and so when you have long-term employees, it, it just wouldn't be reasonable to budget for that. You're, you're just using fund balance and hoping that you have enough. Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
I'm just curious why we need an ordinance.
Uh, in order to approve a budget amendment, it has to be, come to the board.
But isn't this something you should be doing anyway? To do it?
So, so by policy, yes, but a budget amendment requires board approval. So.
I, I would never want to just, uh, while I could just go in and amend the budget, I'd really like to have the documentation, um, where the authority was given for anything that finance does. So the board controls the budget, um, and we really need documentation that the board, uh, formally realizes that and makes, makes the ordinance. We could do it by resolution, except we approve the budget by ordinance, and since we approved the budget by ordinance, now we have locked ourselves into making budget amendments by ordinance.
So we are amending what we had originally approved a few weeks ago, is what you're saying?
Yeah, or even years ago, in the, in the example of, um, of the, so you, you, you guys took an action that either entered into a contractual obligation, or you made a personnel policy or something like that, and we don't know how much that's, those items are going to be. Our budget is a guess. And then anytime that we have to make a lawful payment, um, something, something else that could happen is, uh, um, and this is, this is actually real and is going to happen in next year's budget. Um, we had an interest rate, rate adjustment on some of our debt. Well, we have to pay the debt. However, we need to formally amend the budget for that. We're not going to necessarily do it each meeting, um, because you guys made the decision. If it was something that you were making a decision for in the moment, um, and we knew that it was going to put something over budget, at the time you approved that item, we'll put, put the amendment in the budget. But in this case, you guys approved contracts, uh, and agreements years ago. Um, and so you didn't consider them this year, and this is how I'm getting at it for you, if that makes sense.
Yeah, Alderman Spencer, I think you're talking about amending the budget we just approved a few weeks ago.
Yes.
No, th- this, this is to, to kind of clean up the items from our current fiscal year budget.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So I would anticipate this time next year, we're going to have this, uh, same discussion for our next fiscal year budget, on those, those items that we could
Okay.
go over budget for the same reason.
Yes. But in May, I will bring a, an amendment to you guys to do the budget that you just did, to true up the cash carryover balances. So we estimated, and we will do a formal proof, uh, because if that cash carryover is more or less, it could affect something that you budgeted, if that makes sense.
It's nice to know what we're doing, you know?
Yeah.
As we're changing things, and it's good.
Yes.
Okay.
Our legal counsel, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I, I mean, I think the easy way to think about it is when you approve a budget, it's prospective. You're, you're basically saying, these are the revenues we expect to get, this is how we expect to spend the money. Then you go through the year, at the end of the year, you, you match up your budget that you did a year ago to reality. Is that a good way to think about it, Sheila? And that's what you're doing.
There aren't other questions or items of discussion from the board? Can we, uh, read the proposed ordinance by the fir-, title only on the first reading, please?
An ordinance approving the reappropriation and revision of the City of Kearney, Missouri fiscal year twenty twenty-three adopted city budget.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving the reappropriation and revision of the City of Kearney, Missouri fiscal year twenty twenty-three adopted city budget.
Motion to approve. I'll second.
Pull the board, please.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Elderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Elderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Vote unanimous, ordinance passes. We'll move on to resolutions. Uh, we have a motion approving resolution seventeen twenty twenty-three presented by Eric Marshall, our parks director. A resolution authorizing the city administrators to sign a change order contract with McConnell and Associates for additional grading and installation of RIT wrap behind the Kearney High School baseball field to alleviate excessive standing water in the amount of six thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Eric?
Um, this change order will alleviate that standing water. Um, there was, uh, some uh, confusion on, um, the actual grading when we, uh, received the land, um, in a trade with the grading situation with the baseball field. The school thought, uh, it was to go all the way to the inlets over by the Pickable Escape Park, um, complex, and they got that information from it, the DNR from it, and, and they're in confusion in this. It's a really bad eyesore, the water stands there, and we'd like to, uh, we work well with the school, um, and for this amount, we had McConnell go out, uh, shoot the area and alleviate the drainage that we, um, did improve, uh, which will get it around to the baseball field, but we'd like to take it from the baseball field to the inlets over by and get that area dry.
So, I, I think the school has other areas of, of concerns. I know the heavy rains last week, when I, I drove through the area, um, the large upper grass area by where they have their sign, I mean, there was just a, a massive pool of water waiting to drain, so, a pond of water, for sure. So, um, I, I do think that this is in good faith, a good, a good thing for us to do. Um, I think it should have been considered when we originally, uh, took care of the issue. I, I, um, I know that was staff's recommendation, um, but it was missed. But anyway, any questions from the, the board on this proposed resolution? Seeing none, if we can entertain a motion to approve resolution seventeen twenty twenty-three, uh, resolution authorizing the city administrator to sign a change order contract with McConnell and Associates for six thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Thank you for that report. We have a new, uh, addition to our genum, uh, items for review and discussion. Uh, so we'll go on with the first item, Chapter five hundred building code changed to waive building permit fees for Missouri political subdivisions presented by David Pavlich, our community development director.
I didn't know if Sheila wanted to maybe address the new item, the new six, and the purpose of.
I mean, it's kind of like a mini work session without making you guys have a work session, so.
Opportunity for the board to be able to give some guidance and input on some, uh, possible changes and, and give some clear, uh, expectations to staff.
Yes. Before we actually bring a formal ordinance for you guys to consider, if that makes sense.
So first one, I've, I've got a couple of them here that we're working on. Uh, the first one's related to building code changes. So, uh, what prompted this was we've got, the, the school district submitted some building permit applications for some renovations, and they've asked for a fee waiver. And in our code, we really don't have a section that says we can waive fees. Some, sometimes those get brought to the board, and so, right, we're looking at maybe proposing an ordinance that maybe establishes some criteria for, uh, when a fee might get waived. Probably still come to the board for those fee waivers, but spell something out that says we, as a board, have an ability to do this.
Well, so the problem is, just like with last week, uh, or the last meeting, when we had an entity that wanted to waive a fee, we cannot waive fees on a case-by-case basis. We are allowed to make a, create a class and set a fee, but Rich, I don't know if you want to say something. Um.
So, it's never my role to tell you you can or can't do something. I'm here to advise you of, of the risks of, of taking certain actions. So when you waive fees on a case-by-case basis, you always run the risk of treating similarly situated entities differently, and you, that's how cities end up with lawsuits. Uh, I mean, let me just give you a real world example. I mean, say you have, the school district comes before you at one meeting and says, hey, we have a new building, we're a good community partner, uh, we really don't want to incur this building permit expense, will you waive those for us? Yes. And you vote yes to do that. At the next meeting, the library district comes before you, they have a proposed building that they want to build, they ask you to waive the building permits, and you say no. Uh, you now tru- treated two similarly situated entities differently, and, I mean, you have a potential equal protection lawsuit. So, when I say you can't waive fees, I'm not necessarily saying you can't waive fees, I mean, you are the governing body, but the best practice is to, if you're going to do something, set it by ordinance, define the class. Uh, in other words, if there's a group of entities out there that you don't think should have to pay fees, let's define that in the ordinance. So, it's not a matter of you looking on a case-by-case basis and deciding, eh, I feel like waiving the fees for this group tonight, but maybe not next time. Let's define it in the ordinance, so when people, when they come forward with projects, they can just look at your code and say, oh, look, I'm a five oh one C three, or I'm another government entity, I don't have to pay building permit fee. And you just predefine, and you treat everybody within a certain group of people. So when I say you can't or shouldn't waive fees, that's the basis behind it. I, I just think anytime you're, you're doing something like this, you want to, that's the purpose of having a code, is to tell people how they should, should act when they're doing things near safe. So, my proposal would be, um, you know, if you, if you don't want other government entities to have to pay building permit fees when they bring projects to the city, let's just put an exemption on the code for it.
Which I believe that's a precedent that we've set as a board member, charged the fire district or the school district, uh, or MODOT any fees for that. Are there any items of, of any further discussion or direction from the board on this topic for staff?
What about religious institutions?
We've always charged them.
Really?
Yeah. We did, didn't we?
Something for churches.
When, when I was here, we didn't, but I'm not sure that that was by ordinance.
At first, we did.
I think that may have been.
We could look at that, too, and see what permits have been pulled in, if there was a fee attached to any of those.
Yeah.
I'm thinking about children and seniors, like the senior center, or something involving that. I don't know. You know, it, it has been pretty much, it's been brought to the board on a case-by-case type of thing through the years.
The seniors, they're just five oh one C three.
Right, so he did mention five oh one C threes.
I, I would like to remind the board of the reason for fees. So whenever we put a fee in place, it is because we are benefiting one organization and recouping staff's time and, um, and the city's cost, so that the entire community isn't bearing the cost for that. And so, um.
Taxpayers are already, taxpayers are already paying publicly, you know, they're essentially taxing, if we charge fees to political subdivision, it's essentially taxing our, our taxpayers twice. They're already paying, you know?
Yeah. And so, uh, some residents, if you have a five oh one C three, maybe a five oh one C three i- isn't supported by, you, you know, maybe their mission and purpose is something that some members of your constituents would not be supporting, and now you're asking them to bear the cost of that, just something to consider. Um, and welcome to hear your guys' feedback about that, but I wanted to make sure you were considering that.
Five oh one, two, three.
I'm just be curious to see what person around the communities are doing. Uh, in the years that I've been in it, uh, it's typically the political subdivisions being school districts, um, taxing entities, I'll put it that way. And, and it's typically been religious churches, I'll put it that way, uh, that have been exempt from permit fees. So, um, something to think about.
Yeah, my concern there is if we would exempt one religious organization, we'd have to exempt all religious organizations, whether it's a belief we believe in or not. Um, that's my concern there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I, I like the idea of, of keeping it to political subdivisions, and that would be my recommendation to staff, that, like I said, an opportunity for the rest of the board to weigh in as well.
Having not given this much thought prior to this, it's something I think I need to think on, and it's not something I want to just say, well, let's do it this way. Three or four minutes.
Well, I don't think we're really necessarily asking for a detailed approval or anything, just to get an idea of what you're thinking, so then we can prepare something to bring to you. And then at that time, maybe you'd have other thoughts that you want to consider.
Yeah, you could amend, you could vote it down, you could.
Sounds good.
You go to your next item for discussion.
Uh, next one, nuisance code changes. So what we're working on there is, um, well, the key thing is weed letters. So we're getting into mowing season, and sometimes people don't comply, and we have to go on the property and mow, and then they continue not to mow, and we have to write another letter and go through the process again. Uh, what we'd like to do is, is write in our code, and I think it's allowed by state statute to issue one letter for the growing season, and then if they don't comply, then we can, uh, kind of streamline going and abating the weeds on the property, rather than a new letter each time we see a code violation. Uh, and we issue those letters, it takes up to, you know, ten, ten days to two weeks, and it can grow quite a bit in that period. Um, other parts of that would include, um, changing our days, our code enforcement days, we require seven days plus mailing. State statute says ten days, we'd like to just match what the state says. And then, um, clarify that community development department is an enforcement agent for some of those things in addition to the police department, police department specifically listed.
So you might look into, uh, I know in North Kansas City, we have, we, we call it our repeat offender. Uh, it's, it's actually in a, a, it's part of our property maintenance enforcement ordinance, and it's, so you get a letter, well, it's whatever it's for, uh, weeds. well, it's whatever it's for, weeds, building maintenance, whatever. You get a first violation letter that gives you 10 days. You get a second and final notice of violation. That, Rich, I believe that one also requires a 10 day.
I think it's something by the code, right, David?
He's talking about in North Kansas City.
Well, so the the second letter, there's a timeframe to get, bring it into compliance. I thought state statute said that there had to be a 10 day.
I haven't looked at the statute.
Okay.
I'm not sure off the top of my head what the timeframes are.
Well, and that's fine. So we give them 10 days first time. If they don't comply by ordinance, we get, we write a second and final violation letter. And then if they don't comply, then we mow it or whatever. And then similar to what you're talking about is our repeat offender clause. And for a 12 month period, if they violate for the same thing, we'll go straight to a GOS. So instead of a growing season, we tie it to a 12 month period from the from the original violation letter.
So do you get, when you write the summons, do you mitigate the issue too?
Yes. Well, that's, I suppose that's actually up to the judge, but we will make a recommendation to the judge. And in some cases, he's set a fine plus abate the nuisance. So they could get a fine plus whatever it costs to mow or board up the house or whatever. So it's, it tends to be a very good deterrent because past that final notice, at that point, we don't have to give them any more notification. We'll just simply do it.
Kind of adding on to that a little bit. Were you good at?
How difficult is it for you to track, like when the 12 months? I I can see us having, if you do a growing season, you just know that you're, if it's for grass, weeds, you just know that, okay, it's spring and now if if we've got them, we don't have to go back and check. Oh, did we send in in July? Did we send them in August?
So all of our cases are by address. So alls I have to do is go into the system, type in the address, and it pulls up first violation, final notice, whatever. And like it's a PDF. I click on it. It tells me the the date. I know that 12 months from that date is part of the repeat offender. I don't have to notify them. We simply correct the, abate the nuisance.
What software do you guys use?
It's Intergov. I'm not a fan of it.
Really?
No. There is a better system out there.
What is it?
Smartgov.
Any other feedback on this item for staff?
Well, there's kind of another issue too. We do have a couple out there that even after going to court, we still have issues with them. And I guess we could maybe want to get a little field from the board on not just abatement of weeds, but potentially abatement of unlicensed direct vehicles on the property too. And that might take us a step up in our type of enforcement that we're able to do.
And junk trash and debris.
So I. Are you talking about people that have been to court and not following judges' orders and fines?
So then we go back through the process, issue, you know, issue, get them back into.
I mean, I would hate to see somebody get jail time for not mitigating a nuisance issue like that. But if they're not going to follow our judges' orders and follow our ordinances, then why aren't they being placed in jail or why, you know, or, or I guess at some point, you know, we, you know, are you asking for guidance on?
Well, kind of.
Us like going onto their property and removing the.
Right. Like to remove personal property, like a vehicle. The weeds, the weeds aren't really personal property. We can go and abate. It's a pretty, pretty easy process.
That could get dangerous for our employees. Having somebody go on their private property and take somebody's car.
So we don't, if we're, if it's a vehicle, we don't, the city employees abate it. We hire somebody to abate it.
That's exactly what I was gonna say. I suggested that if you're gonna go that extra step, there are companies out there that specialize in that and you hire them to go do it and you assess that cost back as a lead.
Absolutely. We put a special assessment on the taxes. We don't, for anything other than grass, you know, if we're boarding up a house, we hire it done. We don't do it. Obviously, that can be a liability. Because stepping on to private property for code nuisance code violation will get you in trouble real quick.
And you would also, the other thing we talked about is you would want some kind of administrative search warrant process in place. Judge.
And those are hard to get.
Orders that you can go on the property. That's when you hire the company to go on the property to do it.
Yeah.
And it it is hard to get, but it would only be used in the case of somebody that was just completely not complying with judges' orders.
And boy, wouldn't the neighbors be thrilled to have the trash removed, the old junk cars removed, habit mode, whatever.
I believe you have a case that you're, the court's actively working. That's why this would be brought up too. Okay.
Really too.
Okay.
So, yeah, we need some.
We're hoping that by next week, we do finally have compliance, but they've been hard to deal with.
If we don't have some kind of recourse in our in our codes, I think we need to do that. I think we need to have a little bit of teeth.
I'd hate to see somebody get sentenced to jail time for a nuisance violation.
I would too, but as a city, how how long do you wait for them to come into compliance too? I mean, if you give them two or three shots and the judge says move it or change it and they don't, then what do you do? Yeah.
I could be wrong, but I don't think our ordinance even has the option for jail time. It's a progressive fine. But there's no jail time tied to nuisances.
I believe that's up to a fiscal judge, isn't it?
They're tied by ordinance though. So if your ordinance doesn't allow for jail time.
Just progressive fines?
It's progressive fines, but our fines, I think our fourth offense is a thousand dollars, if I remember right. And if there's a fifth offense, then they get a thousand dollar fine. It doesn't drop back down. It stays at that. A thousand dollar fine, but I don't believe our ordinance allows for jail time.
If they can't pay it, is it abated?
Yes, they can't pay the fine. Well, the abatement is, can be by judge's order. Or our ordinance does allow the city on certain things, I'll put it that way, to abate the ordinance without the judge's order. So like weeds, grass, that type stuff. Our ordinance allows us to abate the ordinance. But when I say we, we hire it done. So our parks department obviously doesn't go mow yards. So we hire it done. And and then that's an assessment that's put back on your taxes.
Just curious, could, I I think ordinance does allow jail time, but if you could look that up and let me know.
It could.
Yeah.
I I think that the judge is concerned about state law. I don't think it would look well if we are jailing somebody.
I agree.
Senate Bill 5, and so I don't think that he.
I would agree.
I think he would hesitate very much to do so.
What next item do we have?
Animal ones are really easy. Right now, the code only has the list, the police department as an enforcement agent, so that would also add to redevelopment. And there is an enforcement agent also.
For animal regulation?
That's an easy one. Minor, minor, not easy, but minor.
Any issues or feedback from the board on that? Okay, Sheila?
So the last thing is, I kind of did a draft of an event permit. So sometimes we have gatherings that will block a public right of way, like a street. Say I want to do a block party or have a big gathering where a lot of times emergency personnel need to know in advance when there's going to be a gathering so that they can be aware of it. And and just to keep, to keep the public safe, especially the people that are attending the event. So I just kind of drafted an event permit. I would really like your guys' feedback. We're having more and more people that want to, are asking to close public streets for events. And we want to make sure that everybody is kept safe, especially with traffic signs that are, and where we are placing those traffic signs and how much notice that we're giving. We would hate for a vehicle that didn't see the signage or that we didn't have it properly signed and somebody drove into a crowd of people. Also, sometimes we don't even know that an event's going on. And so we, I'd really like your feedback on this. It would be a $35 event permit fee that we would be reaching out to the fire department to let them know, get their feedback on like people's plans and how things are going to go. The police department, Public Works, Community Development, we would be reviewing to make sure that we, that they're, where they wanted to place their signs were in compliance with the MUTCD. And just knowing if they need to get any other licenses or permits. And so the other thing is sometimes if you're closing a street, you, people will come and ask the board. We want to make sure that all the neighbors are notified and that we actually get approval. We also, I I said two thirds of the neighbors approving because you might have one, one business owner that just is like, no, I don't want that. And we don't want necessarily, at least I didn't know if you guys wanted one person to be able to kill the entire event. But all of this for you guys to give me feedback on if you think I should change this permit or in any way, if you don't want to do an event permit, like whatever feedback you have.
Any thought about how often, like can you, can you, can I request one of these every month? Or can I, or are you going to hold me to six, six months, every six months or?
I wasn't planning on it, but if if you.
I think my concern would be that somebody decides, hey, this is a great idea. Now, my neighbor is the one guy that says, no, I don't want you to do this and I want to do it every month. I think then you're giving, it's almost an undue hardship on somebody else's day, whether it's a business or or a residential home. If you've got somebody that's wanting to close the street once a month, that might be too, that might be too much. I don't.
Yeah, and I think we need to make some, oh, how do you want to put it? Where we might be willing to close the commercial stuff more than residential, because if you do residential and people trying to get to their houses and different things where we block the street out here, well, they can park down the street, walk up to Gino's or walk wherever, you know, where people trying to get to their houses and there's tons of cars. I think we need to get.
That's a good point. Yeah, that's a good point.
Did, the only question I have is if our legal counsel had the opportunity to review the permit?
He did.
Okay.
I think most entities that are considering doing something like this, whether it's KEC or whichever one it is, they're fairly aware and they know there's a big cost involved because they do hire a police officer off duty to watch the two ends or they do those types of things. So I can't imagine that financially they would want to do it very often. So I don't know about that we need to limit it, but I do kind of see a concern for residential.
Well, so as me, I mean, limited for residential, but maybe not.
I I don't think in our commercial areas, as long as we've got most of the businesses going, oh, sure. Because a lot of times it does bring extra foot traffic to the businesses. Occasionally it does not, you know, but for the most part it does.
Yeah, that's a good point. I like the idea of having kind of a formalized process and a checklist for staff and expectation of residence, whether it's for business or personal use that, you know, we have a, right now, people can block off their streets, request for block parties, right? This kind of formalizes and makes sure that, you know, we contact our, the fire department, contact the police department, and it kind of just formalizes a process for every event to make sure that we're checking all the boxes.
I think it's an awareness. It makes the city aware. It makes police and fire aware that this event will be happening five weeks.
See, this way you have to get invited to the party.
The only, so when, we would need to buy street barricades and detour signs and then we would rent those out so that they actually had the proper signage. And Donnie, you had told me some prices. Do you remember them?
Yeah, the the pedestrian barricades like we have out here are $89 for the, just the galvanized ones. They do have colored orange, red, whatever, and they're $109. And then most of the signage, detour signs, whatever they might need, or they range from $40 to $150 depending on what they would need per sign. The barricades, the plastic two bar barricades, I believe they were. Oh, you're testing the audience.
It was like 200, the high profile ones were 200 and something.
Yeah, 249 is what comes to mind per barricade. And you're going to need a minimum of two, possibly three per end on the street. Or if it's a cul-de-sac, you just need three, so.
I know, we're talking about renting that out.
Purchase prices?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, these aren't rental prices. I was like, my goodness, we have just priced it way out of the ability for most entities to even afford it.
Did you include any of that in the budget for next year?
I I did not because this just came up. We were talking about possibly, there's a request or Carney Enrichment Council is thinking about moving Second Saturdays to downtown. And so, but basically I have in here that they would rent the barricades and detour signs at $10 per barricade and or sign. And that they would also charge i- if they wanted full service where we dropped them all off and picked them up. It would be a fee of $300 to recoup staff time, or they could come pick it up themselves. And we will be approving on the map where the signs and barricades will be placed. So they'll have a map to follow that they actually submit and we'll make sure that it, it follows the MUTCD.
Okay.
So one thing that, so this is very similar to what we have is it's called a short term conditional use permit in North Kansas City. And you know, it's for, you know, if you want to shut down the street or if you want to, even to the extreme. even to the extreme, if you wanna shut down the sidewalk to have a, uh, sale and you're closing down the sidewalk. But one thing that they do is their fee is a hundred dollars. And so I think this thirty-five dollar fee is quite nice, actually. But, um, the other thing that, that, and that they've done, instead of the city owning all of these barricades and having to store them and, and all that, they require the, whoever it is, to rent from a traffic control company rather, because then the liability is on the traffic control company. Uh, most of them use a company called Roadrunner.
Or Streetwise.
Yeah, or Streetwise. Um, that way, we don't have to store these things, we don't have to buy these things. They hire Streetwise or Roadrunner to come in. And these guys are professional, they know where to set these things up, they know how to mark them correctly. And we don't have that liability. And so I think-
What's the cost on that, dude?
Yeah.
The cost of the service?
Yeah.
No, because they pay for it.
Yeah, I know, what, what is it?
What would it cost?
Like, we were gonna charge ten dollars. Wha- what is?
Streetwise or, I, I don't know.
More, substantially more?
Yes.
A lot more.
So would we price our people out of being able to do these things?
No. No, I mean-
I don't wanna make this so prohibitive and cost so much that by the time they pay to do all these and then pay for the off-duty officer and pay all these things, that then they have very little chance of-
But you, you realize though, if, if, if we have Eric or Ryan or one of Donnie's employees putting up these traffic barricade, barricades and devices, if there is a-
We've got the liability.
Yeah, but we're charging three hundred bucks for that instead of ten dollars.
Well, we won't be putting them-
That risk?
We, we are not gonna be putting them out for them. We're just going to be dropping them off for them to put out for their, per their map.
But it's still our equipment, I think, I, I think we would get pulled into that.
Thoughts, Rich?
Or, or just providing the equipment?
No.
Would, would you disagree?
If we're just providing?
Would you disagree that, or, or agree that the, the safest option, the less risk for the city would be to not be involved with it at all and having them rent their own equipment from an outside agency?
I mean, that's always the safest option, but, I mean, at some point, you know, you wanna provide things for your city and allow things, you know, for instance, you know, children are using the park every day and there are always potential liability issues. So I think you just have to balance, you know, how, how far are you willing to go on that risk spectrum? And allow your citizens to participate activities?
Yeah. Boy.
All right, so if you guys, yeah, if you guys have any other direction as staff on these items, feel free to, to email them. If there's nothing else, the next, if you have something else?
I just wanna say this won't, I, I don't necessarily need you guys to take any action on this event permit application. So if anybody is completely opposed to it or would like me to wait like two weeks before I put it into motion, I don't know what, what's your, 'cause I don't, I don't necessarily need action on it.
I am not completely opposed to it. Um, I, I think it would be nice to have something a bit so that we are notifying people. But I don't want to be an impediment to, for example, Second Saturdays being down here 'cause I do think that could be a wonderful thing. We see all these communities that do things, whether it's Excelsior and they block off their downtown on a regular basis or their Great Gatsby days or all the things that they do. Weston, I can name a lot of communities that do it. So we ought to be able to figure out some way that keeps us from being too liable, but also allows us to have a few amenities for our, somewhere in that middle, and I don't know where that is.
For sure. And please don't, uh, confuse that I'm not a proponent of, of, you know, having those events, but I would, it would be good to know if the other, like when Smithville and Excelsior and whatever community has their downtown events, if the city is providing that equipment or if they require them to rent it from somebody else.
I mean, at least if the city provides it, you know it's being provided. If you rely on the organizers to have to get it from somewhere else, then you have a situation where you're gonna have to verify somehow that they've done. So, you know, kind of risks either way.
That's a good point too, I haven't thought of that.
Well, I know we got at Excelsior several times, we've been out for different events, and they'd have a police car at each end and they'd have your yellow tape from one end of the car to the other across the street. It wasn't even a, 'cause you had to have police for the event anyway, and the police just pulled the car and blocked the road. So, I mean, they didn't even have-
That is a good barricade.
Yeah.
Unless you need it for something, neither.
And the MUTCD guidelines are gonna say that we have to notify blocks in advance because if somebody just comes up all of a sudden, like you have to notify people of detours and other routes. And so that's not enough anymore. It, it, it's just not enough by, by law.
I have nothing for mayor's communications this evening. We'll move on to the city administrator's report.
I just have that the next regular board meeting will be Monday, April third, um, at six-thirty PM. And I'm going to be out of the office this week through Friday.
Thank God.
He's on record.
Wow.
I'll move on to Alderman discussion. Alderman Spencer?
Um, I truly have nothing this evening. I think I have spoken more than enough.
Alderman Holt?
I'm good, thank you.
Alderman Lehman?
If I could, I would like to have the, the city administrator and legal counsel, bring back an ordinance, to our next board meeting, uh, to look at banning or repealing the breed-specific dog ban. Uh, we now have an animal control officer. And Excelsior Springs, I believe, was one of the last communities in the area that had a breed-specific dog ban. And, uh, Excelsior Springs repealed theirs last year or the year before. So, um, I know there's, a previous city administrator had made some comments about liability toward the city. Uh, if we didn't have a breed-specific dog ban, we do have a dangerous dog ordinance. Rich, do you see that the city's has any more liability if we don't have a breed-specific dog ban?
You know, I mean, you're, you're talking about private, private activity by private individuals. I mean, the city's not gonna be exposed to liability for things that happen between private parties, so.
And we have a dangerous dog ordinance that it doesn't matter what, dangerous animal ordinance, doesn't matter what breed type.
Right.
That covers all breeds.
A lot of cities have that.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, I think we're one of the last-
Guy last year that got mauled and eaten.
You know, and it, it doesn't matter what the breed is, how they're raised. You know, I could have a Chihuahua and he's gonna bite somebody on the ankle because I trained him that way. So, uh, I think it's wrong for us to, to be the last community to have a breed-specific dog ban when everybody else has repealed their ordinances. So I'd like to see that fixed at our meeting.
Consensus on the board?
I'm not in favor of bringing it from the board.
I, I'm tough too. I have a daughter-in-law with a scar because a dog got her and, um, the Chihuahua will bite you. They are cranky little souls and they will nibble up your ankles left and right. But they won't kill you with that first bite. And I grew up with pit bulls, so I, but I know what a dog can do to a toddler. And until my granddaughters are older and beyond being drugged by a dog, that one concerns me. So, but I, that, that's just, it's such a tough thing.
Tim Cole was in a house with his granddaughter and great dog owners, whole thing with pit bull. He was giving his granddaughter some ice cream and the pit bull just decided to turn into his calf. So, I mean, these things can happen, so, um, but maybe bring forward and look at it.
Okay. Alderman Barker? All right, next item on the agenda is an executive session, a closed session per RSMO six-ten-oh-two-one. One, legal actions causing, causes of action or litigation involving a public governmental body in confidential or privileged communications between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys, and six-ten-oh-two-one, section thirteen, individually identifiable personal, personnel records, performance ratings or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, and our meeting will be adjourned from there. So if we can, uh, consider a motion to enter into executive session at seven-fifty-one?
So, I'll second that.
Pull the board, please.
Alderman Lehman? Alderman Spencer? Alderman Barker? Alderman Holt?
Vote unanimously. The public portion of our meeting has concluded, and we will enter into executive session.